Good evening. We'll now begin the reporting of our regular monthly meeting with a forum meeting present. Meeting is called order at six thirty P M. tonight, and we immediately convene an executive session to discuss collective bargaining, the C S A unit, medical and employment, history of particular persons, and matters leading to the appointment, employment of particular persons at this time. I'd like to call for a motion, a second, and executive session to return over to the session.
Motion.
Motion to approve your second. Mrs. Badger Davies?
Yeah.
Call in favor.
Aye.
No one close, motion carried. The pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Badger Davies?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Webanero?
Here.
Okay. A motion to approve the agenda as written. Now, we've had some different, we have a listing that we've sent out to everybody. We have a, on seven E, we have a M O A that would revise for all units, and eight, we had to revise a listing of salary, and in nine, we had to remove, no, we had to revise language on one of our policies, and on ten, we had to remove policy six thousand. So, with those changes, and motion to approve the agenda as written. Motion. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell. Mrs. Graves, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to approve the minutes of the December tenth regular monthly meeting is written and uncorrected. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Webanero, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, no one opposed. Public comment, well, we have two people who signed up. Now, we did put you down in, or, we did put you down in nine E to follow up on public comments this time for kind of old business. Do you want to address us now, or can we wait until that nine E part?
Yes, we are fine with being really hard.
Okay, okay. Because we did have, you know, we had a discussion, we had a discussion with Jamie on it, we did move into kind of the old business of our public comments, so is that okay with you, then we address it in nine E?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. Ms. Grayslam? Ms. Grayson? Yeah, Grace.
Good evening, Mr. Storms, administration and board members. It is refreshing to know that we are a week away from the halfway mark for this school year. The first semester comes to a close end on the twenty-fourth, which means our seniors only are twenty weeks, twenty school weeks away from graduation. The high school student council is continuing to work on privileges for the seniors. Some ideas that have been discussed are a lounge that would have a seating, a ping-pong table, television, maybe a speaker to listen to music, and even a snack area that could be funded by the senior class or student council if approved. We are exploring locations for this lounge before bringing it to administration. The seniors have also shared their gratitude for the couches in the lobby. This is an area that is strictly for seniors and a place where they can gather and just hang out. The class of two thousand and twenty-five thanks the admin for their trust and providing this privilege. Another privilege that has been brought to the council is the possibility of leaving campus on a lunch or study hall to maybe go to Dunkin's, George's, or McDonald's. There are multiple kinks to work out with this one, with this one with liability, parental permission and et cetera, but we are eager to see what can be done. We have made it clear to the students that their voices are being heard, and we are working hard and closely with our administration to make positive changes for our student body. Tomorrow, we have invited Mr. Berry and Mr. Batt into our student council meeting to work on incentives to increase our school attendance. Together, we hope to come up with more great ideas that will pique the interest of all students in grades nine through twelve. More information will be to come at the next board meeting. Thank you for your time and have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's nice to hear that you want to take on that part of helping with the attendance, so thank you. Okay.
Ready for attendance, my boy?
Yeah, so, we are eagerly waiting for our final report on electric buses. We've studied it, we've done for our district, and we do have an upcoming meeting, so hopefully, I'd like to say by February, but if not, definitely by March, we'll have a report that we can share back to the board on the feasibility of electric buses. We've been in communication with our consultant, and we're kind of waiting right now for them to finalize reports. It took a little bit longer than we thought it was going to, but there, we're starting to get pieces of it, so I think that that'll be a good piece that I can share with the board here in the future. One of the things that I think is important for everyone to know, we are going through a special education audit in our district right now, and a lot of work has gone into that, so kudos to our teachers and our administration, who have really stepped up to address the we, we plan, and Mrs. Arrakis has been an integral part of that plan, as well as other administrators, and our special education staff and classroom teachers too, are working together right now. We have an audit going through our school, how I A Ps are being implemented, and how well, you know, how they're doing that. I think it was a little bit of a stressful time for people, hearing that the state ed was coming in and looking at those types of things, but again, I'd say Rachel's done a great job in ensuring people that, you know, it's one of those opportunities for us to give. We did something, we find out that we didn't do something right, this is an opportunity for us to fix those types of things, so I think it's been going pretty well so far. Rachel, do you have anything you want to add to that?
In looking at, in going through our I A Ps with fine-tooth comb, we have found some errors, some old language that was there, some things from previous years, so we're all learning lessons as we correct those things. It's made a few extra meetings as we correct them. Sometimes they're minor clerical errors, sometimes it's a word wrong here or there, but it does change a goal, and therefore, it's something that we do need to change. So, it's, it's, it's a positive thing, we're looking at it as an opportunity, and we're doing our best to support the, as an administrative team, we're doing our best to support our teachers that are going through the, the hard work that boots on the ground, and do the best that we can to provide them with what they need to do better.
Also, as everyone knows, the teacher evaluation system has changed, or is in the process of changing, I should say to you, so we've gone from thirty-twelve C to thirty-twelve D, now we're going to thirty-twelve E, and it's not called A P P R anymore, it's going to become New York Steps, and we're going to, we are currently working with P A T to come up with some, a process, we're trying to look at what a teacher's need out of this process, we're trying to solve what is an evaluation cycle look like, because it's a little bit more flexibility, and what the length of an evaluation cycle. We're in the early stages of that, a lot of support from Cindy Marcel, one of the vice presidents of the union, she's working with us on that, and we intend on bringing some stuff together to get started and start working through that, but we're also kind of getting a little bit more guidance and more suggestion, but that's where we are right now. And then the last thing I wanted to talk to you, that's why we have Max Headroom over here on the computer, just kidding, Autumn, you're not going to have Max Headroom. Autumn Love is one of our Spanish teachers in high school, and she's come forward to us with a proposal for a trip for students in the, next year, which is to Costa Rica, and I have to commend Autumn for the work that she's done, so there's a packet that was shared with you, information shared with you, and I have a packet here too. We're in that early stages of figuring out how that looks, and what we need to do to create that during, during that time, so. Autumn, do you want to speak for just a second and tell anyone about, like, timeframe, or just any of those type things? I did share that with them, but if you want to mention that?
Yeah, it's cutting out a little bit, you just asked me to explain the trip that I'm proposing, is that what you asked?
Well, and the timeframe, more, more the timeframe.
The timeframe. So, we're looking at April, the spring break of two thousand and twenty-six, so a little over a year from now.
Perfect. And Autumn, could you also tell us about the students that, what, what grade level students are you talking about participating?
Yeah, I wanted to keep it just to the upperclassmen, the current, or the upcoming juniors and seniors for next year, and then, of course, only the students that have went through the comprehensive exam for Spanish at the level three Spanish classes.
So, we looked into it, and it's been since two thousand and fourteen that our district did send students abroad to China with Mr. Chen, and so Autumn's done a lot of work to get us to that place, and now it'd be a lot of communication with the families to see where we go from there in regards to, you know, the money and the cost for, per student and that type of thing. So, that's where we are, and we wanted to bring that to your attention, and we're still working on that, and that's, that's our goal for April of next year. Does the planning of the board have any questions about that, or did it add a report from Autumn into the board agenda? Just one, looking at the proposal, which I appreciate a lot of great information on there, the cost, I think, for an individual family could be substantial. Is there something that the district or the, the class is planning for those that might not be able to come up with on their own to make sure it is more equitable experience? Autumn, you want to answer that?
Yeah, actually, so through Explorica, through World Strides, the company that I'm working with, when you sign up for this particular trip, you automatically get signed up for your own website that people can donate money to, and they actually have a quite extensive, I think it's like three pages, it's probably in that packet that I gave to Mr. Storms as well, extensive list of different amazing types of fundraisers that the schools can do, whether they're one-day fundraisers or week-long fundraisers, so there's a lot of really great ideas that I think our group would have to decide collectively together what we would want to get behind. But again, there's a, there's quite an extensive list in that packet, and then, of course, there's the websites for people to donate money to them as well.
Thank you. And another question?
No, the itinerary looks amazing, I mean, it's quite a variety of different activities, so thank you for exploring that.
Does the board vote on this, or is this encompassed in policies we already have?
So, it's encompassed in the policies we have right now, that we thought was really important to bring it to you, just so you know where, because you might hear about it out there in the board world, and it just won't go the situation, so we have a little more work to do on that, but I think it's really important to be able to give Autumn the green light to move forward with those types of things, and I did say to her that I was uncomfortable doing that after I was able to talk about it here in a public, in a public meeting, and also, you know, sharing with you. But again, there were some real concerns, or we are doubting all of our i's and crossing all of our t's with this, including insurance and all the aspects, and so we're not leaving one stone unturned, if you will, I, we're, she's doing a great job on that, so it's important that I bring it to you tonight so that you heard about it, but it's not, it's not, it's not a vote personally.
Right, and it's twenty-five students, correct?
The estimate, I had about sixty students express interest, so we, kind of going off of those numbers, estimated about twenty-five, and after talking with Mr. Storms, we decided we weren't going to put a cap on it, especially being a first, hopefully, approved trip to go in quite some time, not wanting to take too large of a group for the first time going abroad.
Right, and then chaperones, obviously, would pay their own expenses, no?
The chaperones are included, actually, for every six students, they have one chaperone that would be paid for.
One per six student, and that's in that price, okay, I didn't read that.
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Are you looking for chaperones? Always open-minded to anyone. And also, I'm not for sure how the school policy works with this, and Mr. Storms and I were talking about this a little bit, but they do allow, if the school is okay with it, allow, like, the adults, if they wanted to come with their children, they wouldn't be staying in the room with their children, but there, there is a, I think it's four hundred and eighty-five dollars extra to have a separate room for the adults if they felt uncomfortable having their kids go that far without having them there as well. But that would be a chaperone position, and it would not be through the school by any means, it would be on their own means, just through the corporation that I would be setting this, this through, so that would be something that the school could decide whether they want to do that or not, or allow that or not, I should say.
I think one of the nice parts about this is that Autumn's done a lot of research on this particular topic, and I think that even if a parent was maybe a little reticent, but really wanted their child to experience this type of thing, Autumn has come up with, you know, there are some solutions for that, so none of those have completely been ironed out at this point, but we're still in that process, so.
Great.
I appreciate you talking about this point, Autumn.
Thank you.
And if we have more questions, and if any of the board members come, think of something that they'd like to have answered, I'll reach out to you, and you and I can meet, and then we'll get that back to them on even a Friday, on a Friday of the day, okay?
Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think I lost my computer. Sorry.
Okay. Standing. Short speech, nine. P A T would like to wish all the board members that happy completed, happy new year, and as we begin two thousand and twenty-five, we know there are changes coming, negotiations of thirty-twelve E as well as a new contractual bargaining agreement. We are looking forward to working together, hopefully, to come, together to hopefully come to agreements that will be beneficial for both parties. That's it. Thank you. Okay. Admin report, we're on to our budget stuff.
On the budget.
On the budget.
Yes, everyone welcome to the first budget meeting of the twenty-first of the sixth budget season. It seems crazy that we're back here already. So, I wanted to start off tonight by, with a review of the twenty-four, twenty-five New York State budget, so as you may recall, Foundation Aid became fully funded in twenty-three, twenty-four, and was fully funded in twenty-four, twenty-five. There were some changes to the Foundation Aid formula in twenty-four, twenty-five. The C P I factor used in the Foundation Aid calculation was reduced. It was increased from the governor's initial proposal, but still reduced from the law that was in place prior to the enacted budget. There was also cuts threatened to save harmless amounts, which prevents schools from receiving less aid in this year than they did the year before. However, those cuts ended up being rejected in the enacted New York State budget. The other big piece of the New York State budget was, at least for schools, was to task the Rockefeller Institute of Government with reviewing the Foundation Aid formula and delivering a report by December first. So, just as a brief review, what is Foundation Aid? It is the district's largest category of state aid. It is a very complicated formula that I won't get into here, but it really is based off of a successful school study that was done long ago and is now adjusted based on regional costs, pupil needs, pupil counts, and special education. So, I won't go into the depths of the Rockefeller Institute Foundation Aid study, it's almost three hundred pages long, so if anyone would like to review it, feel free, I have read it, it is interesting, but it's a lot of information. The, you know, the institute delivered recommendations on many different factors to the Foundation Aid formula. This surrounds pupil needs counts, regional costs, local share, pupil counts, safe harmless and reserve funds, as well as other education policy matters. Again, there are so many recommendations that the impact of these is unknown until we see what they mean when they're all plugged into that formula, if any. So, a quick review of the present financial climate, the twenty-four, twenty, or twenty-five, twenty-six executive budget must be released no later than tomorrow. As I said, it is unknown whether the governor will implement any of the proposed changes that the Rockefeller Institute put forth. She, the governor, has made some comments about wanting to support school funding and kind of walked back the save harmless cuts, so the district is not save harmless at this point in time, but that is overall a good sign for schools if that's the case. We are still burdened with inflationary pressures, as well as rising personnel costs, salaries, benefits, minimum wage increases. We are also facing declining enrollment, that's in Peru, but across the state, and we do have several labor negotiations unsettled or upcoming. So, now into the multi-year financial plan. So, I will start here with revenue projections. So, our state aid is looking decent, our foundation aid came in a little bit lower than our budget because of that C P I adjustment in our actual enrollment numbers. However, we did receive additional aid for special education costs, so they kind of balance each other out. In terms of other districts and governments, we had originally budgeted for tuition for special education students from other districts, however, that placement did not end up working out, so there is some revenue shortfalls there. Use of money in property is basically bank interest. While the present interest rate climate is not great for us as consumers, it is beneficial to us as a school district because our money is earning more money. So, it is hard to say what will happen with federal administration changes, but right now, things are looking good for us. In terms of expenditure projections, we do have some outstanding, we do have an outstanding collective bargaining agreement, so these numbers are a little difficult to firm up at this time. Of course, salaries and benefits are our biggest expenditure categories. In terms of our contractual materials and supplies of B O S E's codes, they are a little bit less than we initially budgeted due to bringing some students back from B O S E's into a district placement. These costs can fluctuate greatly depending on our student population. So, in terms of the general fund surplus or deficit projections, we did have a deficit in twenty-one, twenty-two, we had modest surpluses in twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four. However, we are projecting deficits for both twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six. It is important to note that twenty-five, twenty-six right now is based on assumptions and percentages, and is not a reflection of the budget because we haven't even started that process. Here is a graphical representation, again, we see expenditures outpacing revenues mainly because of those inflationary pressures that I, I've spoken about. Here's a fund balance comparison of twenty-two, twenty-three versus twenty-three, twenty-four. You will see we did have a modest increase in fund balance, that was that about eighty-two thousand dollar surplus. However, it is worth noting that our unassigned fund balance, which is basically just free fund balance, did decrease, and a big reason is because we have funded our capital reserve to support the cost of a capital project that was approved by voters in October. And then, this is just a little more detail on that fund balance number. And as we keep going down the budget development process, we will start next month with some preliminary budget information, and then March is where things really start to take off. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Drew. Break time. Okay. Reports and communications, six. Are there any questions, statements, comments about, of the different reports, day through to tell?
I have two comments for six, grants and tech report. On the grants, appreciate the new information that we talked about tonight from report. I also want to give a quick shout-out to the K C five P T O for the work supporting the grants coordinator and work, you know, pursuing some of these grants. On the tech report one, I really appreciate the clarity, there are a few links in there that are applicable, applicable, that you have done before, you know? So, there's one on, like, the phishing attack, I've detailed some of it, what happened there. So, if you could just maybe send that along. Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
And I think it's important, where we have the notice of public hearing and so on with this war tax project, it's a, it's a host agreement, not a pilot project for, for our district, which we found that host agreements are more, I mean, more physical, financial based than that. Do we have, does Jackie go with that, or do you go first?
She, she reaches out to them, and does attend to, so I'm.
I know, they pushed it off into February.
They did.
Yeah.
She did the last one, she did.
And going along with technology, thank you, for the update. Any other discussion, questions? Okay, then, a motion to approve the reports and communications, so from six A through seven, Ms. Webanero, second, Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone close? Motion carried. Okay, new business. Any questions, comments, anything on that? Thank you to the donations, that's the one with the, like, sorry, go right, ten thousand dollars from Harbor Freight?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, any questions, discussion on any of that?
And this one, seven E is now down to one, a M O A versus two, separate.
Seven E is, yes. Okay.
Just on seven H.
Seven H.
Establish six point seven five hours today. Wasn't clear, is this an additional type or a change to existing type? Is it a change?
School bus drive.
I'm not sure on this one.
So, we're adding a type, we didn't have, we didn't have a driver before with this hours.
Oh.
Now.
So, we have to add a type of drivers.
Yes, otherwise, they would be, they wouldn't get a whole day, a whole day, they have to do at least six minimum, because our next bus driver will be seated around seven or seven and a half, we didn't create a type that person, that we need to do those two special runs for, so we penalize them against the higher hour, so if we create that new type, which along the way, we never used that eight hours, and so I think it was maybe this tweet, and we ended up with an eight hours, we created, so that's what it is, the statement, let you drop below six, so if you're below six hours, you've got no choice, you have to compare it against a six-hour person, but other than that, electric reading types to help, you know, people get credits, full day credits towards their retirement system as long as they go first. So, we had this, the one individual that we agreed to take are runs upwards, we call them the S W runs, but unfortunately, up in the piece of middle up in that area, they agreed to get full loads, and we have a whole lot of people also, so, we helped them sell, we didn't want to penalize them and make them go against a higher hour person.
Thank you, Sharon, for the clarification on that.
Any other questions, discussion, comments?
Girls' wrestling question.
Yeah.
Enacted immediately. We're working on it right now, we're through the process, this work looking forward this year. How many girls have been involved? So, we have, I believe, two.
Two, great.
Just two.
Okay. Got a call.
Oh, oh.
Or, that's second.
I don't know yet, the, the, the name's very helpful.
Yes.
Two more.
That was very helpful, very interesting how the approach to that, thank you for that.
It's a great opportunity.
Ask a question. Has anybody talked to the two girls before we even talked about merger?
It's been, it's been talked about in the wrestling world, this is, this was very fast, it came through like, we have a school that wants to take this on, we need to get it done now, before February, because that's when the state championship is, so by creating this merger and agreeing to it, it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to do it, the girls, if you look at the question and answer, the girls will get the choice if they want to do it.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, so it doesn't, it doesn't affect them, this just allows them that if they want to do this, then.
There's an opportunity.
Then there's the opportunity to do it, and I, I do believe that one of our girl wrestlers could have a very good shot at placing at states, is my understanding.
She also had concern because she's going to be a senior next year, she's always about the boys, so she was kind of.
So, if you, I don't know if you got a chance to look at this, but with the senior thing, it could all change next year, so this is only for this, the remaining part of this year specifically. Next year, a new merger would have to be created, the state may even make them choose at the beginning of the season whether they want to compete with boys specifically, or they want to go a girl path. So, if they go the girl path. So if they go the girl path, and that's what the state makes them do, then we have to have a girls' wrestling team up here so they can go and compete in girls' tournaments and get their qualifying points for states. And we'd have to host a sectional for it. So that is up in the air. Our section is going to continue to fight to allow them to continue to wrestle with boys next year and then still have this opportunity as a girls' team to go represent our section in states. So it'd be with this merger again.
They would be able to do both.
Yes, if the state agrees to that. Yep.
The information you provided as backup was excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for doing this.
You're welcome.
Okay, good stuff. Any other questions? Okay, so motion to set, let's see, we're A through M, right? New business A through M. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second. Second, Mr. Peters, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carried. Okay, personnel, any questions on personnel? We had one correction under D for our salary rate. Any questions? Put on that one? Okay, motion to approve personnel, A, A through H. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell. Second, Mrs. Graves, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Okay, unfinished business under our mission, policy zero, 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 zero. This is our second reading on that. A, any questions on that?
Thank you again for your contributions.
That's very, we've got Mr. Storms and Mrs. Graves, myself, and Mr. Provost. Sometimes we have Cara come in, sometimes Shannon comes in, but it seems like we've we've cut through a lot of
Move along.
Yep. And we're taking this with recommendations for the most part, sometimes we have to do a little tweaking for our own district.
And policy zero, one, zero, five.
So you will not be approving that, you'll be doing just your first reading on that tonight, so when you approve this zero, 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 zero series, that won't be in there.
You said, which one did you expect?
So as far as the series, but not on
Right, it was provided to us through Ms. Robinley.
Oh, that's what, yes.
So we really should refer to the second reading on it. So it will be added to the zero series afterwards.
Are you going to hear from
But it doesn't mean you can't adopt the zero series tonight. He will at least adopt it without that.
Without that, okay.
Thank you, Sherri.
Okay.
Can you add a question about five?
Well, it stipulated like the creation of the committee.
Is that one in, is that one in our packet?
Yeah, it's now a new business.
But is it in the packet?
Uh, no, because it's attached, it was just a simple one. It's in board docs and on
Okay. Yep, I did, yep. Okay. Okay, motion to conduct the second reading and adopt the district revised, restated, and amended complete zero, 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 oh, four, zero, quad, zero quad. Series four policies as first read at December tenth, twenty-four Board Education meeting. Any and all previously adopted zero, 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 zero series policies are now considered retired or obsolete. Have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second. Second, Mr. Webber, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Okay, now the nine thousand series, we've got a few things on this one. We have some revised language on that ninety-two, forty, and remove ninety-four, twenty because it has to do with the evaluations, right?
Doesn't mean it won't be back.
Right, right, right. Once you get through things on that.
And I did, Mr. Robinero had some questions, so if you're your exec, I did load some information in that nine thousand on your board docs to tell you a little bit about conditional appointments.
To clarify, what you
Yeah, like what the designation of conditional appointments is. Sure, sure.
Okay.
The nine, two, four, zero, which is recruiting and hiring. I know at our, we're trying to talk about responsibilities as far as screening in this goes, this base for the recruiting process, recruiting process, and then it was for us and maybe step next class inserting something about the screening, so who we like designated as a hiring manager. Division, scout, scout information. Because right now it just says the board is responsible for hiring, completing, and for some other donation, and I don't want to state that more explicitly. What processes, screening as far as
So although it does, under the hiring clause at least, it does require that the superintendent has to ensure that the candidates
Yeah.
So he does have to assume responsibility for making sure that they meet the qualifications to be able to fill the transition.
You're speaking more about
Like the interviewing process, it sounds like, right? Because I know like, well, sometimes should the board participate in the bidding process or we just do that condition after hand? How many, so I think it's pretty clear. Because I know the staff can make sure they're qualified, the board is going to approve that nomination if it's boring. About here, both of that screening process, I think, twenty-four.
Would that be a policy or procedural?
Could be a procedural policy. Sure.
Fair enough, we get proposed, yeah, could be a procedure.
I can see if the some, as you probably most real aware of, some of these policies must have as actual regulations and words
Yes.
tied along with it. I can reach out to them and see if they have those for this policy. And then that helps
That would do it.
It always, it helps with insurance.
Right. Okay, anything else on the nine thousand? So motion to conduct a second reading, adopt the district revised, restated, amended series of four policies as first read at December tenth, twenty-four Board Education meeting. Any and all previously adopted nine thousand series policies are now retired and obsolete. Have a motion?
No.
Motion, Mr. Peters, second. Second, Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Okay. Second reading of film three, twenty-one. Educational evaluations. Any questions, comments on that?
Since we don't currently have, as we were speaking with Ms. Robbie before she left and then speaking with Ms. Rivas, we do feel it's important, Ms. Rivas and Mr. Storms have certainly done some work on getting names, quotes, that kind of thing, and checking with other school districts to see who's using who and what they're paying. We feel it's important to adopt this now and then it will be included since we're not quite sure how far down the road the four thousands are going to be adopted now, but then it'll be, it'll be the four thousands when we get to that point.
I know before, I know BOSI's got certain evaluators that are independent evaluators that the districts have
Sure.
that come into that.
This also allows us to be able to make sure
Yep. Okay, any questions on that? Motion, do I need a motion to conduct the second reading and adopt policy forty-three, twenty-one, point four, and then you, educational evaluations?
So
Mr. Robinero, second. Second, Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Okay, cell phone usage, we've got a report.
Yep.
Cell phone use in the middle school?
Yeah, after our last meeting, we discussed a report, and back to our report from middle school and just see how things were going with cell phone use. And so, Mr. Manchester and Mrs. Kenny O'Neill worked together to agree that that is what's here for the board tonight. And then if we have any questions, Mr. Manchester's got a couple people on the other, but we can ask Mrs. Kenny O'Neill, or myself, if there's any additional pressures.
I really appreciate the report and the follow-up, kind of what's getting from students and faculty with the impact expanding for the tools to So I'm just curious going to be looking forward at how we expand this out from middle schools with this, but with cell policy overall.
Sure.
What are we taking from our this year that maybe we need to change there, but also incorporate out across service schools?
Sure. So I think that that's, that'll be a good opportunity for us to talk with our leadership team and have a conversation next, you know, here this report is, and let's talk about it as a high school, middle school, but it's important that we wanted to make sure you had this opportunity before we, we go down the avenue of, of changing a lot with the high school. It's important for the board to proceed this report, and if the board has any, any feedback in regards to that topic, and where do we go from here? And then we can take that back to our Code of Conduct Committee and have that conversation because that's typically where that would, where it would fall. But if there, if there are suggestions or comments from the board on this particular topic, including, it's a great place to have.
It was nice to see the percentages go down. So that's a good positive piece of what has happened with that. And of course, we're still waiting for something from the state to, because that's still out there.
Right, I think that we're going to see most of that, so it can be a little control.
Yep, that's what I
You know.
So if I'm reading this correctly, the, I guess it's somewhat of a inverse like recommendation, but it sounds like there should be a survey of some kind or, or review with students and faculty about how this is working.
So this, this is, this is information from reviewing with our staff and faculty.
Okay, so this, so but there's a section, number six, that makes recommendations.
Oh, right.
But it's, it's talking about a survey. It says we have not put out any staff or student surveys since the inception. This could be done to gather feedback to make positive changes. Is that in the works?
Has it at this point, we absolutely can do that.
Okay.
Well, and what the House of State has just put out that survey to, was our parents' where?
Yes.
For the
Shionne.
Shionne, right? And now I don't know if they're going to separate our district specifically.
Yeah, we don't want to get, we wouldn't get access to that. It's happening tomorrow.
We did look at, we can look at that survey as well when we came in from Mark, who sent it to me.
But then they also get it, and then they
And then we received it from everybody, but I did look at the questions myself.
Yeah.
So we may be able to take that particular
Pieces of it.
survey and modify it to our, like, to gates and information for us. So if that's the case, we can, it would be interesting to gain that information.
Did that survey only go out to middle school? That Shionne survey, the House of State?
I don't know.
I did, I don't know. Huh?
I got it.
You did get it in the elementary, too, okay.
They went out district.
I wasn't sure because I know Shionne is middle school.
So we, I apologize if I missed this, but are we anticipating similar work from the high school or
So the, the high school didn't do, gave the state policy with the kids.
Yeah.
So our goal was to get a look at it from the middle school perspective and see how things are going from the middle school and then what our, what our next step is for the high school. So if that's what you'd like me to do, have more conversations with the leadership team, I can do that. And we can also establish a survey that can go out to our middle school staff to see what they're feeling and if there are pieces of the survey that we feel are applicable to high school staff, we can do that as well.
I would, I would think
Well, even knowing the percentages of what's happened with the state, with high school, what it's like in here.
Same, that's how I And we don't, and again, we don't know where the state is with that sort of policy of law that's coming.
I think they're probably throw, like you said, throw it back.
Back and up.
Also, but at least we'll be prepared.
But if we could have some comparisons with high school with the percentages that the middle school presented us.
Yeah, that, and, yeah, I guess we don't know what the state is going to do, so if they decide, doesn't matter if they decide, we will have some
The leadership team and I will look at this, at the report as a whole, and we'll look at it from a more comprehensive piece with the secondary side of campus. So we'll, we'll look at some surveys that, the possibility of two different surveys, a survey that will address the current challenges, and then there may be some pieces from that that we may also give to high school students or high school staff.
And elementary doesn't seem to be an issue.
May I speak?
Yeah.
So I would just, it's rare that we have, since it's, I think the biggest thing that I have seen, we do have some students that wear a watch that might have a fitness tracker, and I, I left it with them as, as long as they're not using it in the capacity of a cell phone or a device, if they're using it for counting steps, that could have some positive outcome for them. So I find that if we have any deviations from that, we reach out to our parents. We find that our parents are very supportive of that use as a teachable element, but you and Barbie.
Thank you. Also, just, I was glad to see the, the report from the Surgeon General there, it goes out specifically, but it's funny to know, I mean, there's
Yes.
... two and a half pages of concerns about it, and I think it's, it's a conversation, even if it does state local control, I think it's
Well, and I think the, the biggest piece of that Surgeon General, if you haven't read the whole thing, biggest piece is, I think it was like pages fifteen through eighteen, what policymakers can do, what technology companies can do, what parents and caregivers can do, what researchers can do. And that might be something, again, that might be a podcast, you know, this, taking the Surgeon General's report and what we can do locally. If you, if you haven't read the whole Surgeon General report, you don't want to read all twenty-one pages, look at fif, look, look at fifteen through eighteen, the recommendations.
Okay. I'd be surprised if they They might.
They'll probably give it, I hope they Uh huh, they did. Okay. Anything else? Whoever received the report was asking a little bit more information?
Yep.
Okay, just a public comment, follow-up. We've got our eighty K kids enrolled.
We also, we, you know, one of the areas we talked about, it was our tech vision committee and then the one-to-one devices that was brought up at our last meeting. And so that will, will be a discussion, fight up at our tech vision committee meetings, I think that's important. I'm also going to, one of the pieces that, that was really discussed at our last meeting too was the, the screen time as well as playtime and where we were, where, I think that it's really important right now that I meet with our three administrators in the elementary school to sit down and have a conversation. We're going to create a survey conversation with our teachers. So exactly if it's a survey or if it's a conversation, we want to determine at each grade level, what are we saying is the amount of downtime, if you will, that students have? And what does that downtime look like for students? You know, how much of that downtime is screen time? Think that that's going to be really important. And one of the other things that we also recognize and we're looking into right now is that our Title I funding requires us to do more work with parent involvement, and we're looking into creating a panel or some level of presentation for our community where we could have different panelists on there, including some of our teachers, to, to talk about, you know, what does it look like, the difference between screen time in the classroom and what, what is play, what constitutes that playtime? So I'll be meeting this next, before the next board meeting with the administrators to establish a, a plan, we can come back with some information on what is the actual screen time or downtime our kids may have slash playtime and how much of it is used in the land of screen, you know, out of screen. So those are some of the things. And then we also have the two people that
Yes.
that signed up that we moved to the section as well.
Yep.
So Kate, do you have your first?
We've
Go ahead, Nick. We're
Perfect, great.
We had a little, like, super quick, not PowerPoint thing. I didn't know, Nick, is it possible that if I email it to you, it can be pulled up or if I can connect to the thing? Not possible. Or I can just put it on? I can also just do all these. Email who, I'm sorry?
So if you could email Karen, both?
Sure.
Does this only do the I just, I may have some stuff
Oh, yeah.
I don't Sorry.
Yeah. Oh, okay. I'll get out.
Me too.
Not that, all of a sudden, my problem doesn't Yeah.
That's what she gets back. The past year she has a little challenge. That's the way it just backs down.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm Katie Lemar, and I was here the last time and introduced myself. I am so passionate about this to play that my kids aren't even in the district yet. My son will be here as a kid arriver next year, and I'm anxious and excited about that adventure. But we first really wanted to start to thank Mr. Damiani. I know Mr. Mitchell's not here. For being really incredibly welcoming and approachable and encouraging us to continue to be a part of this conversation. We really want to emphasize, we are here to work with you. We are not moms that are against the district. If anything, we just want to be a part of this conversation. I think we are all facing so much with the rapid integration of technology and screens into our children's lives. And just trying to figure out how to navigate that. So as a school counselor myself, I see firsthand every single day the detrimental effects on our students' well-being. And with that being said, as someone who works in the school, I know we are facing so many barriers of what do we do about it? What can we do? What's within our realm? And constantly having those conversations of what next? And Whitney's about to present some of the goals that we came up with at the request of Mr. Damiani. And although they may sound ambitious at first, and you may be quick to think, we can't make that happen. Where there's not enough time in the day, who's supposed to do that? I really hope that we can all take the time to think about why we are doing the things the way we are and question what's working and what's not. I hope we can all work together to remember our why as parents, as educators, and as board members. And ensure that we really are doing what's best for our kids, even when it feels like we can't. So I'm going to turn it over to Whitney, and I will stand by your side so we can... Thanks. Hi, I'm Whitney Hamline. I was, again, one of the moms that spoke at the November board meeting. I have three young children in the district. And I just kind of wanted to review some of the goals that we came up with. We just had a quick slide on some of the facts. Currently, on average, children ages eight to twelve spend four to six hours on a day watching screens. This includes, you know, at home and at school. Teens thirteen, eighteen spend up to nine hours on screens, which is quite a bit of time. As we know, major depression and other mental illness in girls has had a hundred and forty-five percent increase since 2010. And for boys, it's been a hundred and sixty-one percent increase. That's, again, just for major depression. There's anxiety and all sorts of other issues that have been on the rise. Currently, average recess time across the country is about twenty-five minutes, which has been a significant decrease since the 1970s. And we also know that US reading and math scores are at the lowest level that they've gotten in decades. So one goal that we talked about was grades K to five would not have access to individual one-on-one devices. Classroom sets of devices may be provided, but with limited... Sorry, excuse me. Internet access limited to a pre-approved whitelist versus having open access to the internet. This would ensure controlled and purposeful use of technology during instructional time. And would help decrease any incidences or level, you know... I know that there's like tiered levels. Making sure that students are staying on track, not getting off and getting caught in different websites and clicking the next link. Especially because children of this age don't know how to control those impulses, and they're naturally curious. So they're going to explore as much as they can. Having something like a pre-approved whitelist would limit that ability.
I just want to add too, one thing we talked about, again, I will reiterate that we set ambitious goals. But one thing we discussed with the idea of not having the one-to-one devices that go home starting in third grade is could we pilot one year of just third grade doesn't have it? And then work our way towards getting up to where it's nobody in the upper elementary as well?
The evidence we had, those are two links that in the PowerPoint or in the handbook, you could click to see where we got the information from and motivation from. Goal number two is that student device usage in grades K through twelve would be tracked daily right now. We have a great program Custodial that we like. Parents have access to see what their children are doing. I didn't see that it tracked specific minutes on each device. It just kind of shows you the time that the student logged in and logged off and which website they accessed. The ProTech Department would monitor and report the usage to promote found screen time. Pro School District will also publish annual device usage and free play statistics to the public. Additionally, any changes to the technology guidelines or implementations will be communicated to the community by a parent square at least two weeks before they take effect with opportunities for feedback provided at school board meetings. I will say, myself along with many other moms in the community, we're very, very pleased to see that YouTube is no longer accessible in Peru. That's been a huge issue. So it was really nice to see, and we appreciate your efforts on that. Goal number three, where students in grades K through five would be allotted forty minutes of recess and free play each school day excluding transition and eating time. During this time, students would not be allowed to utilize electronic devices to promote physical activity and social interaction. Recession time would be scheduled and monitored to ensure consistency across all classrooms. And one of the other goals I had mentioned, or one of the things... The fact that I had mentioned is that on average, twenty-five minutes is typically allotted across the board. Right now, most elementary students at Peru are getting twenty minutes or significantly less because that twenty minutes includes transition time. And if you're at the second grade wing and you have to walk down to the playground, it takes about five to ten minutes of transition. So some children are only getting about ten minutes of recess outside. Goal number four, Pro School District will create opportunities for families and students to be educated on best practices for technology use within the district at home. We realize that families are a huge part of children's learning. It's not just the school district, it's everybody. And oftentimes, parents don't know how to log into Custodial. They don't know how to use an app that their student is using. They also don't always know best practice of limiting screen time for their own child. We're hoping that the district could create opportunities for education for those parents and guardians so that we can all do this collaboratively.
We appreciate it. Thank Mr. Damiani. You already, again, ambitiously reached out to Jaina Hyatt, which is lovely. I hope you can hear back from him. Thanks, just generation up.
Yep. We had some questions. I had reached out to Mr. Storms because we had a great meeting, like I said. But there's a couple of questions that obviously Mr. Damiani is not able to answer. Some of them regarding technology and some of them regarding replay. I hadn't heard back from you, Mr. Storms. So these were some of the other ones that we just kind of wanted to follow up on. And I was hoping that in the future, we'd be able to kind of get some of those. I know a couple of the parents in the community did apply to the Tech Vision Committee. So hopefully, they will hear back in the next few weeks to see how that will be facilitated. But I think that's pretty much it.
I'm grateful to hear that you are meeting with the elementary committee to have a conversation to start here.
Awesome.
Like I said, I am this school myself. And, you know, I kind of giggled at these girls when they were like, forty minutes of recess. I was like, good luck. Because it does, it just feels like we don't have enough time in our day to do all of the things. And we are so academically driven, which I one hundred percent am supportive as an educator, as mom. But then you highlight our math, our ELA scores, right, they're going down. Our mental health is going down. So what we're doing is not working, right? And it's like you're constantly creating more and more time for intervention, intervention. But our kids can't play, they can't communicate, they don't know how to be friends, they don't know how to be problem solvers. And I just... I know that so much good could come out of limiting our amount of time on screens, increasing our free play, and giving our kids a chance to... And I think all of us can play a huge, huge role in that. And we really appreciate you allowing us to be a part of this conversation, and we look forward to that certainly. That's it.
You have that on the computer so that we do...
Yeah, I know. But I didn't know if I should email to the board. I didn't know how to do that, so that was it.
Got it.
Thank you.
Cool.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, new business. CEWW SBA meeting. But it was supposed to be cybersecurity.
When you missed when you were gone, when they talked about it. Remember, we were at the meeting, and you put it in my phone, cybersecurity. That's what Eric said. You were there. Karen was there. Patty was there.
It looks like it's regionalization.
I know. That's why it's exciting.
Regionalization. I would like to go to this one.
I'll still go, but I'm just disappointed it's not cybersecurity. So you have Ms. Barry Mitchell?
Yes, please. Anybody else? January thirtieth. Okay. Okay. You'll get Mr. Storms.
I'll be there.
No cost, so you're not putting any cost on to us, are you?
I'll be there.
But they're registered, they're taken care of.
Yeah, okay, good. Okay, then the NISWA Area Six meeting.
We'll just need a motion and a second.
Motion, okay.
Ms. Barry and...
Motion to approve Mr. Mitchell. And Mr. Storms too, the CEWW School Board Association meeting.
Second.
Okay. First and second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. I want to oppose. And then the NISWA Area Six meeting. That's in Lake Placid, on the morning. Anybody to want to go in there on February seventh?
I don't need to have the cameras.
I think it's voluntary to let everybody in or...
I think so. We'll look forward to our report. It's meeting the representatives, but we're really not sure who the representatives will be there after what's going on in our state. Okay, so we don't need a motion because Mr. Buckner Arrow is going with CEWW? Okay? Okay, then we're into policy zero one zero five. The Equity, Inclusivity, and Diversity in Education.
Listen, I did have some comments to make in this.
Yep. Yep, and we did look at that last Friday morning.
Page two mentions super technical. So this one, it is called the... Just the quote we said, it's something on the left side. But they're not in a place of that. And then the other part was page three, mentioning the committee. I forgot my comments were just, we don't have a committee in place.
At this time, we have planned to...
Did we change that?
Bring this into existing committees already.
But actually before this.
But did we take that out when you put...
I think so. We... It may not have showed up right in here.
Wellness committees. That didn't come up on my... Okay, anything else? Because we did look at that. We said, we start another committee, you know, when we've already got the pieces of committees that are doing some of this.
Do we need a committee in place? I guess as far as like making sure that that is understood responsibility or scope for committees, is there any action there?
We can be sure that we can discuss which committees are the most applicable to make sure whether it's a shared... A policy shared with the committee and the leader committees, but it actually is happening at those committees.
Are all the corrections on what's on the computer, Sheri? I didn't bring that up.
For some reason, my search feature is like not working.
Because we did have some... We did change a lot. Changed quite a few little things. Yeah, I think the wrong one is attached, not what we suggested last Friday morning.
When we put district slash building committees will assist the administration developing the committee. So that was going to be existing. That was page two. Under accountability, transparency, and review.
Right.
Is where we actually changed the district slash building committees will assist.
Yes, yes.
It's the ones that are already exist.
Yeah, it is. Okay, that's where it is.
Were the other original ones that committed, created or whatever.
Yes, it did. Created committee. Yep, sorry. Okay. Okay, so that is the first reading. So a motion to conduct the first reading of the district's revised... Oh, zero one zero five Equity, Inclusivity, and Diversity in Education. Motion. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second. Second, Mrs. Graves, all favor?
Aye.
I want to oppose, motion carried. And the six thousand series, we are taking out.
Pulling it out.
Pulling it out for...
There's more work to do there. I'm bringing back to you...
Yeah. And then, so D is out. E is the seven thousand series?
Is seven four two zero so far this? What is it took out? It's about dedication things?
Yes.
So my only question on it, has the board discussed being cautious of dedicating things to people? Because it, you know, comes to a weird point in this department. We're just...
Didn't we change that before?
I don't think that's what it says. Right, isn't this just dedicating something new?
New or renovated facility.
Doesn't mean you're naming it after...
You're not dedicating it to somebody.
Any brother there.
Right.
But I guess that doesn't necessarily mean...
We discussed, I don't think we ever got to the point about changing policy.
Today, I mean, it's... I think what you're talking about is just naming, right? Like naming the facility after somebody. Or what is our obligation? Somebody wants to put a bench in there, do we keep it forever or do we treat, you know?
So maybe just re-put this to the main dedication after the opening ceremony, right?
Or just say ceremonies.
Yeah.
It just says may at its discretion. It doesn't say we have to.
Is that the dedication? I think I understand what you're asking for. Dedication after a building project?
Yes.
And lack is put up?
Yes.
Members are recognized that we're on the board.
Yeah.
I think that's what I think.
But maybe the third paragraph would just say...
But I think you're right.
Maybe the third paragraph would just say ceremonies. Or do the elimination ceremonies.
Well, it's not like it's saying you have to do it each time. It's a very personal...
Maybe the third paragraph we take right out?
I think it just says may at its discretion. So if we decide not to, then...
But if you take a look at the third paragraph, you can take it right out.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't think it matters.
Yeah.
So we'll remove... If you're okay with that, we'll remove the third paragraph?
Take the paragraph right out. Because we only have one... One part of our district. Capital field, the rest of it is generic. Okay, so that was the first reading of our seven thousand policies. The only one we have a change in is seventy-four twenty so far. So motion to conduct the first reading of the district to complete seven thousand series of policies. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell.
Second.
Second, Mr. Peters, all favor?
Aye.
I want to oppose, motion carried. Don't have any more comments. And we don't need the executive session. So with that, I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters.
I also like the motion for the last meeting that I missed.
I tell you, we're still sitting here for days.
Yeah.